Folks, it is 6:31, so I'm gonna go on and call us to order so we can get started. First item on our agenda is, I'm gonna, or we're gonna open up with prayer and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Silkwood to open us up with prayer, she'll do that, please.
Bringing us all here tonight together to discuss everything that is on our agenda and guide us in our decision-making as we discuss all of this and make our way through the evening, listening to the public comments and taking everyone's thoughts and desires into consideration. And I would also like to say a special prayer tonight for the people of Israel, to keep them safe, and in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I'm gonna ask Caitlin to lead us off with a roll call.
Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
And Coker?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda item is an acceptance of the agenda, I'm assuming all planning commissioners have gotten the opportunity to review this, don't see any changes being made, if that's the case, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So move.
I think I heard Commissioner Silkwood first on that, alright, and then we've got a second from Commissioner Martin. Do we need to do a roll call on that, or is it Caitlin do his voice vote?
I think we can do a voice.
Okay. With that, all in favor, please signify, and we've got a motion to accept the agenda, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, and motion carries. Next up on our agenda item is public hearing, we have, I wanna explain what we have going, we have citizens' comments that will happen at every meeting, and then tonight we have a public hearing planned specifically for the Stop 30 Land Use and Transportation Plan. That's what's gonna go on right here, so you previously had the opportunity to sign up for that, looks like we've had eight folks that have signed up for that, so I'm just gonna call folks in order, when I call your name, if you would, just come up to the podium, introduce yourself, state your name again, and just let us know your address, and then you, each person will have five minutes to speak then on that. So, first up, it looks like we have Robert Little, if you'll come to the podium, please.
Robert Little, 314 Raindrop, just off of Creekwood. Robert Little, 314 Raindrop, just off of Creekwood. I'm trying to figure out why the city hired a private consultant for this plan. Stop 30 Development Plan out of Gallatin, and Eagle Investment also out of Gallatin wanted this development more than we do. The two investors, one property is sold for $5 million, chunk of change, the owing's almost $500,000. Why do they want this development done? It must be money. They're trying to develop our subdivision into just a roadway, we don't need that. Also, if the city is so broke, why did the mayor inform the city council to vote for a consultant? We're trying to save money for the city, seems like we're just blowing money anywhere. On the Stop 30 Plan, it states there was a meeting on April 18th, where are the minutes for that meeting? If you pull up all the records, it says it was canceled.
Does anyone have an idea where all the meeting notes are? That was in your handout.
August 19th, there was another meeting, we're still trying to find out where those meetings are. So it seems like developers and everyone's trying to hide information from the people of Creekwood subdivision. When the developer said the wide Stop 30 Road, it's gonna be a joke, because we're still waiting to try and get Old Shackle and Main Street correct, that's been 25 years, so I don't know why we're paying a consultant and saying that, you know, nothing's gonna get done on Stop 30, same thing with Old, New Shackle, that's not gonna get wide, because that's a state road, so we have no control over it, still, we're wasting money. Development Plan states that there is just a blueprint and not a set in stones, so whatever developer wants, after you guys decide, they can do whatever they want with the property. So still, why we pay a consultant? Our street is gonna go down the twos. If you look what you did to break by when they made that group up behind Sam's, that's what they're gonna do at Creekwood. Creekwood has no sidewalks. We have no place to walk besides the street, kids can't ride their bikes unless they're in the street. So is the city going to do sidewalks for our subdivision? I don't think so. So it's up to you to do the correct thing for our subdivision, and make sure you put a buffer all the way around our subdivision, you're saying there's gonna be one on the north side, but where Crestview ends up in the development that he paid $5 million for, there's no stopping them, they can do whatever they want and come right through our subdivision. If you look at the photo from they did to Sam's, that's gonna happen in our subdivision, and that's why I think you guys need to stop this. Yeah, they can develop that area, that's their prerogative, but don't make the road coming through our subdivision, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Next up, we have Pat Barrett.
I'm representing the Barrett, I'll be, I'm on the Barrett.
Okay, so, so we're gonna start, yeah, next up, we have Sandra Hale.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Hale, I live at 127 Arrowhead Drive, which is in the subdivision, right adjacent to the Stop 30 Road, across from the church property. I have lived in that area for like, more than 25 years, and I just have a few concerns about the plan. There is a large area along Drake's Creek where that creek is, that is a flood plain, and they did touch on that in the plan, but it actually floods all on that flat land if you go up to Stop 30, and then there's a big hill, and that's where the horse berm was, because I used to have my horse in that barn, and I know that land very well. So, I'm concerned about infrastructure, water runoff, I think an environmental impact study needs to be done to make sure the water is not polluted, and if there is a plan to put a berm or something there, it's going to affect Spear Point, because the house is on Spear Point where those electrical towers are, some of the neighbors there had to put in a berm themselves, because water runs through there, down to that Stop 30 and Drake's Creek, because that is a very low section of land. Now, I believe there is a plan to do something with Drake's Creek Road, which I did not see addressed in this plan, I only saw Stop 30 and New Shackle Island, but I think you really gotta look at Drake's Creek Road, and then there's a proposed greenway there. What happens when that floods, does it get wiped out like some of our other parks that we have, that are in the flood plains? Let me see if I have anything else. That intersection is already very congested, it's one on Drake's Creek and Stop 30, because we have the school traffic, we have Durham Farms that was put in back there, and they're adding a lot more property back there, so I think it's gonna be critical to look at infrastructure in that area before any developer can come in there and, and put a lot of development that's gonna cause more traffic and things like that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ted Hamilton, I live at 123 Secretariat Place in Hendersonville. About 15 years ago, my wife and I purchased a small piece of property at the corner of Drake's Creek and Stop 30, part of the church's land, it had been, and there was a house on it then, it was, at that time zoned residential and remains residential today, however, in the plans that I've seen from the planning recommendation, our small portion of that would be part of a small retail area, unless it's changed since I last saw it. We, at that intersection, there is, as you know, a, an improvement planned to make that intersection wider and make it able to handle the traffic there better. It will take about, the piece of property when we bought it was about 1.6 acres, the plan will take about seven tenths of an acre, so it leaves about nine tenths of an acre that will be at the corner of that intersection. We believe, frankly, that that is the highest and best use of that property, and we stand in affirmation of the planning commission's work, thank you.
Julie McLendon?
My name is Julie McLendon, I live at 1214 Spear Point Drive, and I just feel like when we come out to a meeting like this, just for you to see our faces out here, you just kinda need to know where we stand. So, as for my family and the people that reside at my house, we're opposed to anything commercial being put on Stop 30 and coming right out of our Spear Point, exactly where this gentleman is talking about, putting a retail, something on that corner, it's a very congested intersection, if you don't live there, it probably doesn't affect you. I kind of come out of my road and avoid it, I avoid going down New Shackle, or going up to New Shackle, I kind of go around the other way, it puts more miles on my car, but it's worth it, just to stay away from that really narrow Stop 30 Road up to New Shackle. So I realize there's a problem, it needs to be widened, I don't think a commercial, any commercial businesses are the answer, it's very residential, right, it, only Jake's Place is the only thing that's commercial right now, and we like it that way, we just want it to stay residential, widen the road, and everybody can keep the commercial stuff on the other side of 386, where it belongs. Thank you.
And yes, I am a little nervous. My name is Jonna Barrett, I live at 104 Valley Drive, and I'm representing the Barrett Farm today. My father, John Patton Barrett, who has resided here 77 years, except for two years when he was in the Navy, my mom was born on the corner of Old Shackle and Goshentown Road, and she is a native of Hendersonville. My grandparents bought our farm in 1947 before Hendersonville was incorporated. His sister Jane Barrett Potts, who resides in Houston, Texas, that grew up on our farm, is half-owner, and we have had four generations that have lived there, and three generations, which includes my father, myself, and my children, have grown up on the Barrett Farm. When the farm was annexed, all that has barely been gained is the trash pickup, not much improvement except more traffic. Now, Creekwood, which has already been brought up, last year Creekwood Lane was paved because of the drainage issue that they fixed, but the rest of it was left in horrible conditions. And as the gentleman that spoke first, I was told that $30,000 was spent on the first presentation of the Stop 30 corridor, what else has been spent instead of improving what we have? The Indian Lake, the old Indian Lake, Saunders Ferry Road and Walton Ferry Roads, they've never been widened, but they've been paved, and there's, Stop 30 is smaller in general area than those roads. And then why is industrial and commercial being proposed in our residential area? We enjoy our wildlife and what little peace and quiet we have left in our area. I ask you to vote no to leave Stop 30 quiet as it is now and could be in the future. Would any of you want this in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julia Dyer, Jonna is my mother, I live at 104 Valley Drive, and I've lived in Hendersonville my entire life, and I have no intention of leaving anytime soon or leaving the farm, I believe that this is a complete opposite of what most people want for the city of Hendersonville. Why would you want to put an industrial area in a completely residential area? There are so many deer and turkey and wildlife of all kinds that run around our farm, where are they gonna go once this is all built? Are they just supposed to hang out at our farm all day and have nowhere left to go except for the roads, and be in people's backyards and be in parking lots? I am completely opposed to this, like a lot of people that I know, it doesn't make any sense why an industrial ideal is opposed in a residential area, like my mother said, would you want this in front of your house or across the street from where your children play? It just seems very odd to me that this would be proposed in a city like this, so, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Tim Jones, I'm the county commissioner for this area in question, I live at 112 Georgetown Drive. In discussions with people about this and posts I've seen on Facebook and other social media, the words that started the conversation were, this is some of the last undeveloped land in Hendersonville, we need to do something. That frightens a lot of people, people do not like to hear that, it's sad, frankly, it breaks my heart to hear that, I've lived in Hendersonville all my life, and it's just discouraging to see the plan going this way, when you see commercial development over in that part of the area. Creekwood Estates, that whole area does not want any kind of commercial or mixed-use backing up to their backyards, that, they've lived there that long on a dead-end neighborhood, and it's been quiet back there for the most part, and they can't fathom having, having something pop up behind them like that. These are just words that I've heard from some of my constituents. I was speaking to some people that couldn't make it here tonight, they said, because once they get into their neighborhood, it's, they're not even gonna try to get out of it, especially during this time of night. The gentleman that spoke behind me here, that spoke about usage for the property on the corner, that probably will improve that road, that intersection, and I would be glad to see that road improved somehow, some way, but I just don't think this is the, the right thing to use to improve the road, and frankly, I believe that's what we're talking about here, is ways we can improve that road, because the city can't afford to improve the road. But at this cost, I think everybody here probably would agree, this, it's not worth it, if this is the cost that it takes to improve the road, the city's gotta find another way to do it. The, if you could get out of that intersection better, it still wouldn't help much for the people over there to get around town any better, the whole New Shackle Island area is so congested with the addition of Costco over there, that section of Ward 6 is just being inundated with traffic, it's, it's more than, than that area can stand, there's, there's gonna have to be a lot of improvements before any kind of growth even happens in that area, I just think the pause button needs to be pushed on that, but I understand the, the, it felt like leverage, but the strategy that was proposed to these people was, we need to do something, because if we leave it like it is, there could be this many houses in this area, I don't know if it was 380 or some exorbitant amount of houses that could be put in this area, a huge portion of that land is Mr. Barrett's land. How many of you know Mr. Barrett and his family? They own 46 acres of that land that's being discussed tonight, and I asked them, how many people have come to talk to them about what their feelings are about what the planning commissions do and what the city's looking at? They said, not a single one. Nobody's even considered what the Barretts want, and yet they've got multi-generational family that have lived there and that say they're going to continue to live there, all those houses that could be crammed onto their property, that needs to be taken out of the math. That's, that's not able to be used as a threat anymore. Now that you know that, all those houses need to be taken out to see what it would look like if it was left alone. There's a reason why developers haven't developed over there so far, I don't know what it is, but there's a reason, I don't know if the land is not primed for it, for residential, if there's, if there, the flood plains, or the way the creek is, the lay of the land, I don't know what it is, but for some reason it's been okay and not developed for this long, but as soon as you change what is allowable for that area, ears are gonna perk up, people that have not thought about that land are gonna start thinking about that land, and my fear is, the properties on either side of Mr. Barrett's property are gonna be sucked up and developed, and he's gonna be squeezed out of his multi-generational family home. I just think this plan needs a lot more consideration and a lot more creative thinking, out-of-the-box thinking, if you truly wanna do what makes these people happy, make it unaffordable to develop, consider impact fees, and look at other ways to provide to help that road out with improvements. Thank you.
That was it for the public hearing on that, as I mentioned before that, we have a public comments section as well on that, so I am going to close that public hearing on that, and it does not, and it does not look like anybody's signed up for public comments either, so that we'll move on with our agenda then on that. Next item on our agenda is the acceptance of, or excuse me, the approval of the minutes from our November meeting on that. I assume planning commissioners have had the opportunity to review those, anybody have any changes, revisions, anything like that? Seeing none, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve our November minutes.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for Commissioner Altizer, and Commissioner Longarm, I'm gonna take yours as a second, if that'll be okay, on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries, so now we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is discussion and presentation of the Stop 30 Future Land Use and Transportation Plan. And Timothy, you and, I think you and Director Free have been taking the lead on this from the planning staff on this, so I'll turn it over to you on that, now that we get started.
Thank you. So the, the plan that y'all have before you tonight is the culmination of nearly a year-long process that has, has included a stakeholder's work session, which was the meeting that occurred on April 18th, a public workshop which occurred on June 20th, a planning commission work session which occurred on September 19th, two public surveys, and now another public hearing tonight, in addition to numerous staff meetings and consultant meetings. This plan has changed several times in response to that, the, the public process and the concerns expressed through that process, those changes are highlighted in the staff report, and Kevin Tilbury, our consultant, will walk us through those in just a second. Of course, we do have an existing land use plan, which has been in place for almost 15 years. Of course, the, the future land use plan is not the same thing as zoning, the existing land use plan and the proposed land use plan, if, if it should be adopted and replace the existing land use plan for that area, that serves as a guide for any future rezoning So, our existing land use plan allows for single-family development for the bulk of the subject, of the subject area, that's the suburban living character area, with densities of up to four units per acre, it also allows for townhomes of up to eight to 10 units per acre. The remaining areas, which are along New Shackle Island, and then the area east of Drake's Creek, are shown as Regional Activity Center, which allows for office. The existing zoning, for the, for the large parcels that are located between 386 and Stop 30, that's the Bible Baptist property, the Barrett parcel, and the old, where Davidson Academy was going to go, those are zoned SR1, which allows single-family density of up to three units per acre, and the, the four parcels that are north of Stop 30 are zoned estate residential, which allows single-family density of, of a, one unit per acre, and then the smaller lots that are fronting on Drake's Creek Road, those are also zoned estate I think that would be a good time, for Kevin to kind of pull up the proposed plan and, and walk us through that.
Good evening, Kevin Tilbury with K-14, I've spoken to you a few times before. So I think you all know me by now, thanks for having the opportunity to meet with you again. So what we'd like to do tonight is a couple things, one, we'd like to, if you recall, we, we met at the September 19th meeting, and just briefly recap you on what was discussed at that meeting and what you all directed us to do to change the plan and how we changed the plan, then we'll get into the specifics of the new recommended plan based on the changes, and then we'll have an opportunity for discussion, you can ask questions, and then I believe that Timothy will then lead a discussion on whether we want to adopt the plan as is, make changes, or, or table it. So just quickly, before we recap, I wanna remind everyone what the plan does, so this plan doesn't obligate anyone to do anything, it's simply a way to guide your future decision-making, so that if you, a property owner within the study area, wants to, let's say, apply for a rezoning, this is the plan that you'll consult to, to, when you deliberate whether that's appropriate or not. It does a couple of other things as well, the reason that we do this is that it provides clarity and transparency, and transparency, so if someone wants to know what the future of Stop 30 Road is intended to be, this plan will give insight into that. Also, the city wants to understand where to allocate limited resources on things like infrastructure, so where future road improvements should go and things like that, and a land use plan will help and guide that decision-making. What it, what the plan does not do is automatically change the zoning, so whatever you ultimately adopt is not going to entitle property owners, it's still just the plan, and, and to that effect, it also doesn't obligate property owners to do anything, if the, if property owners wanna keep a farm or an open field, open space, they, they can do that for as long as they want, this plan does not obligate them to change anything about their property. So just to recap too, as Timothy mentioned, this is what property owners are currently entitled to do, the, the purple color is zoned suburban residential, low density, and then the sort of brownish color is estate residential, so this is current zoning, so this is what property owners are currently entitled to do if they wanted to, to change their property or build on their property. If you were to sum up all the parcels within that purple area, you could build about 340 units at the entitled density, and then in that brown area, about another 75 units. So just over 400 residential units is currently what's entitled to property owners in the area, but currently no commercial. It's not the regulation, it's the plan, and it's a mixture of suburban living and a little bit of regional activity center, but mostly suburban residential living. So if you recall at the September meeting, we came to you with two options, and these were the culmination of several changes to the original proposals. And, you know, they, they varied, they both called for retail around Drake's Creek Road and then points out towards Newshackle Island. The two plans sort of varied a little bit. One focused more on residential and retail, and then the other focused more on a balance of office, retail, and light industrial, and that would be option B. And the, where we landed at the last work session was that you all directed us to move forward with option B, but with several changes. So the first thing is, at the corner of Newshackle Island, instead of the sort of off, mix of residential, office, and light retail, is to change that into a more religious-focused land use, so the institutional religious would be the primary land use, but also some limited retail on Newshackle Island and some residential associated with the residential use. And then the other properties closer to Drake's Creek, get rid of the industrial and make it more mixed office with limited flex commercial. The other properties, as part of the recommendation, would stay estate residential to the north of Stop 30 Road, and then the retail at Drake's Creek would stay retail, so those would not change as part of that option B. Now, a couple of things would change or, or be eliminated. You directed us to remove the creekward extension from the plan, so we heard a number of concerns about that at the last meeting, so that's been removed from the plan. And then also, there was a new road that would run parallel to Stop 30 and intersect with Newshackle Island, and that has also been removed from the plan.
I got a question while you're doing that. Sir, this is, this is his opportunity. Sir. This is his opportunity for the, and the opportunity for the planning commission.
Now on that. That's, we had a public hearing for the public to comment, and now, and this is where it is, and I'll have to call folks out of order if they speak up on that, so. For the planning commission, for the presentation on that. This is, the planning commission is now handling its portion of it now on that, so.
Okay, so this is what the, then what the recommended plan would look like. So I mentioned that, that property there at Newshackle Island, that would, what we're calling institutional mixed, so the primary use would be religious institution. There would be some residential, a limited amount, we're calling it accessory or ancillary residential associated with the religious use on the property, and then also limited retail only on Newshackle Island Road. And then the properties further to the east would be office mixed, so the industrial component was eliminated and it's primarily office with limited commercial flex uses. So that could be crafts, technology, production, those types, services, those types of things. As I mentioned, the, the retail component right at Drake's Creek, south of Stop 30, would, would still be a part of the plan. There would be green space in the floodplain area, just to the west of Drake's Creek, and then the estate residential, which is one unit per acre, which is what is currently zoned, would stay the same. Now, we've heard a number of concerns about Stop 30 Road. We have a couple of different designs for what the road could look like, and this is actually what's currently being designed, is we've heard, you know, the, currently Stop 30 Road is substandard in that the lanes are really narrow. And so what's currently being designed for Stop 30 Road is to widen the road a little bit, so adding a shoulder, making the travel lanes a little bit wider, so if you have a home on Stop 30, you don't have to worry about your mailbox getting whacked. This will give you that a little bit of extra clearance. And then also concurrent with development that would happen on the south side of the road, that a, a trail, a multi-use path would be built with that. So this is what's currently being designed, sort of an upgrade to the existing road, and then this is the long-term vision, that ultimately there would be a, a turn lane, so when cars are going to turn, they would get out of the lane of traffic and then sidewalk and a trail on either side with maybe some landscaping. This is Newshackle Island, as was pointed out, this is a state road, so the city doesn't necessarily control this road, it's a, you know, it's, it's a T-dot road, but if and when the road is improved, this is the vision for the road, that it would be widened to four lanes with a, a left turn lane and sidewalks on each side with some landscaping, and that's part of the plan as well. So that's the, that's the plan. We hope that we captured the direction that you gave us at the last work session in September. I'm gonna open it up now for discussion and see if you have any questions.
Questions, comments from commissioners?
I got questions.
Sorry, this is for commissioners to ask in this, questions, comments for commissioners?
Seeing none.
I got one question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hastings.
The, the Barrett Farm, does it cover all the area that's identified as OEM?
You mean, does, yeah, so this area here? So are you saying is that all Barrett Farm there in blue?
That's my question.
Yeah, no, I believe just part of it is Barrett Farm, and then part of it is another property.
Right, the parcel to the, the leftmost blue property would be the Barrett property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Okay, so the left property is the Barrett Farm, and then the right property is another beneficiary of the plan, let's say Eagle, Stop 30 Financial Group. Are, are they here? Are they Frank Bowling? Is anybody from? So we've got a lot of the community here, and we've got the Barretts here. It's disappointing that the large owner of that property's not here, and then on the other side is, I think you had mentioned Eagle Investment Group. It would've been nice to have them at least talk in support of it, but.
Do you want to stand in front of him?
I like the fact that we took that road out that was cut through. That seemed to be very problematic, and I appreciate everybody, or the planning staff, being responsive to that. I think that's a huge improvement. And I understand that, I understand expansion's gonna happen, and we've gotta, it's gonna happen somewhere. It's just, this is, this is troublesome with, with the comments that I've heard and the online poll, I think it was like 72%, which tells me that there's something that, that we need to probably tweak. The, at an earlier meeting, the church had a representative come in here, and they asked for, for something, and we gave it to them, and the institutional mixed, I think is what you call it. And I think the Barrett should get something similar, some, some, something like that, so they can have some, some input and stuff. And those are just kind of my thoughts. I think the traffics with the Costco coming in is also an issue. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Other questions, comments from commissioners?
I would just address one comment that was made about the Barrett property and their intent for it to remain as it is, undeveloped. That's, I believe that, that's, I understand that, I think we all understand that is the owner's intent for that property. As far as not counting any potential future residential units that might go on that property, should it ever be sold or turned over to some other owner, that's not within the city's control to, to keep that property as is. That's completely, completely within the owner's control. We all know, we, we have intentions for, to do things in the future. Sometimes those future plans work out, sometimes they change dramatically. I don't think it would be correct for the city to put on a plan that that property will never develop, because as I, as we know, things change in the future, and the city needs to have some sort of idea of what would happen in that area should that ownership
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I usually try to save my questions, comments for the last, out of deference on that. I wanna echo something that Mr. Witten said on that note, and just kind of relay a little personal experience on that. To his point, you can't control what somebody else is. I speak for my own grandfather on that. Had a farm in East Tennessee that he had the intention it was supposed to stay in the family, its entire, and it did for about seven years after its death, and then things change on that. And it was, if I had my druthers, it would not have happened, but I did not have my druthers on that. It's, things just happen sometimes on that. I think we've all got families, and I'll just leave it at that. We all have families, and we've all had family squabbles on stuff. That's the reality of life that we're living in. And so what we're intending to do, or what the proposal here is on this, is this is not to change zoning on anything. This is to lay out a plan if this ever was developed. One reason I was actually supportive of the changes that we made at the workshop in September is, I think the last speaker addressed on this, is that there's a little bit of cat and mouse game on some of this stuff. I don't want to see this developed anytime soon. I think that's in agreement with the majority of the audience here on this. I think he made the remark about make it so expensive to develop that you just kind of just swayed folks from doing this. There is, and I'm just speaking kind of bluntly on this, there's not a market for office development right now on this. So putting this as the future land use plan, as opposed to multifamily apartments on that as the future land use plan, does the best to preserve this property for the longest period of time on that. And so that's, it's, like I said, I kind of looked at this little cat and mouse game. We're not coming in and developing anything. That's not what anybody's proposing here on this. And so where I was supportive of this plan, and will continue to be supportive of this plan as amended on this, is after the changes that were made, taking out the connector roads, that sort of thing, I think this does the best to keep the property in the condition that it is for the longest period of time on that. And so with that, I'll be voting for it on that, but I just wanted to kind of share where my perspective was on that. Again, I'm going to kind of ask if any other planning commissioners have any other questions or comments. Before then, if seeing none, if there is none, then I'll go on and kind of entertain a motion to approve as presented. So one more round for, oh, Commissioner Evans.
You knew I'd have to say something. It, it breaks my heart to see, I, I have some land in Westmoreland, and it breaks my heart to go through from here to Westmoreland and see all the old family farms broken up into 5.01 acres and sold off to the highest bidder from somewhere else that comes in to elevate our property values and to enjoy what we're here enjoying now. Anybody that knows me knows that I am absolutely opposed to high-density housing in Hendersonville. I have been, ever since I've been here, I've done poll after poll, and about 80-some-few percent of the folks who live here are also opposed to that. And the biggest problem that we have in Hendersonville and the surrounding area is traffic, and with people come traffic. And I'm not interested in, in that area developing or any other area developing at this point because we're full. In my estimation, we're full. Our infrastructure won't handle anymore. I, I would like to see Stop 30 Road made a little more safer, because it is a cut-through road, it's gonna continue to be a cut-through road, and there's not anything we can do about that. And to add one other comment to that, I'm really tired of being blamed for mandating chicken restaurants in Hendersonville. We, we, we have nothing to do with what somebody puts on that land if they fit the zoning requirements. And to say, why don't Bay, meaning the planning commission, tell them, whoever they are, to put some other kind of restaurant that we like? Well, that's not our cause. It's up to the people that have the money, that meet the requirements, that want to spend it on a chicken restaurant. And if they think they can make a profit, great, wonderful, but it's up to them, it's not up to us. So what happens on Stop 30 Road is really not up to us beyond the planning process. And if we don't plan now, there will be no order to the chaos that'll follow out there. So nothing says that you have to do anything with your property. Nobody's mandating anything. Nobody's saying, you can't do that anymore. Nobody said that. But if there is no plan, and something happened at one of those, in one of those pieces of property, and somebody said, oh my God, I can make millions of dollars if I decide to put this on my property. Well, there needs to be a plan and an idea of what can be put on that property so that the market value and the traffic and the infrastructure and everything else can be discussed, looked at, altered if necessary, before any such thing happens. So we're, we're not here trying to beat people over the head and tell them what they can do with their land. That's, that's not our purpose. We're planters. We plan, and we hope that we do add some kind of order to the chaos that would follow if we didn't have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I wish you'd spoke up before I did, you could've saved me the effort on that. But with that, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I am going to make a motion that we approve the land use plan as presented on this. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second from Commissioner, was that Commissioner Slatter?
Yes.
Thank you. Caitlin, will you call the roll on this, please?
We need to do the roll call with the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're gonna vote with this on roll call, sorry. Looks like we have a vote, or we have a vote of eight yes, zero abstention, and one no. And so motion carries on that. So I want to say just thank you to staff for the effort that y'all put into this, and I want to say thank you to everybody that came out here on this too as well. Appreciate y'all's input in this. This has been a process, and I think that even though it's, it's kind of that old saying about how the sausage was made on this, sometimes it's not pretty on this, but I think the end result is gonna be what y'all have in mind. We're of the same mind on that. We don't want anything over here on this anytime soon, and I think this is the best way to get that. And so we want to thank everybody that put in the work on that, so. Next item on the agenda is item eight, staff-level projects approved. I'm sorry, I skipped over one, apologize on that. Next item on the agenda is we have a resolution recommending acceptance of the completed streets in Stone, Stone Ridge Phase Two, Hendersonville, Southern County, Tennessee. I'll make the motion to, to accept.
Second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Altizer. Caitlin, we, or, excuse me, we need to do another roll call vote on this.
Correct.
Caitlin, I should've done this last time, but will you read the results on this, please?
Eight, nine yeses and zero abstentions, zero nays, all approved.
Thank you. Now, got ahead of myself a moment.
Now, got ahead of myself a moment ago, so now we'll move on to item eight, staff level projects approved. And I'll turn this over to Director Free to kinda walk us through that.
Yeah, all, all the projects, as you can see, that are, that are approved, there's just one, William Ferguson Subdivision, Section Two. There's several projects that are, that are pending, a variety of different things, I can answer any questions on there. Nothing of any significance is, that I really would wanna pull out, but I can answer any questions about any of those. Mr. Chairman?
Any questions, comments, commissioners, real quick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, not on any of the staff level projects pending, but Director Free, if you would just give us a quick update on the Tesla charging station? It, it really, I mean, I'll just come out and say it, it looks like a construction dump over there. And I would like to know what's going on, thank you.
Yeah, so, our, our part of that is, is done, their plans have been approved, they complied with the requirement to move the unit back, they obtained a parking spot, converted that to islands, they could shift their, that transformer back, so they complied with our requirements, plans have been stamped. So the ball's in their court as far as cleaning up that mess. I, I was by there a few days ago, it is a mess. I don't know what the holdup is. But I, as far as I know, they have every intent to follow through with it.
Is there anything we can do to make them sort of straighten it up a little bit? I mean, there are weeds that are four feet tall and growing out of the rubble, and it just, the fence is kind of leaning over and almost falling, it just, it's a mess.
Yeah, well, I think we...
Yeah, what, what we'll do on that is we'll refer that to our property maintenance code enforcement, and we can notify them tomorrow, and have them look at that, and then they can get something to the, to the owner, and then we can get that resolved, yeah. So, yeah, so, even on a construction site, you know, it's, it certainly, there's a certain amount of mess that occurs, but there's some that just, it gets a little too messy, and especially you still, even if you have a construction site, you still need to maintain the grass and, and the area around there, so.
I think it's a major retailer.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll let the police department know about that, and have one of their property maintenance code enforcement staff take a look at that, and see if we can get that resolved.
Commissioner Hardwick?
I was just gonna say to Ms. Silkwood, I know that property manager fairly well, I'll call them and tell them, look, you need to clean it up, or you're gonna start getting calls from the city, so I'll do that tomorrow as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardwick.
I have a question, just, I wanna know a little bit about this Broken Paddle Outfitters building.
Where is it?
That was actually my question, is where, where is it?
This, this is an item, and Timothy, let me know if there's additional information. This is an item that I think is in the park property, right by the lake, I believe, right by Volunteer Park, Volunteer?
Yes.
Memorial, Memorial Park.
Memorial Park, right.
And out where the ducks are, you know, where you feed the ducks, and a little bit further down, they have a, a building, that's a small building they're gonna put in, I think that they're gonna rent kayaks, but I think they're working with BOMA on an agreement on that as well. And so this is just a site plan of where they're gonna, gonna place that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, 'cause when I put in the address, it was smack dab in the middle of the park, so I wanted to get confirmation that that was correct, so thank you. Any other questions, comments from commissioners about staff level projects? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Director Free, just for planning director comments before we go to adjournment then.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a few, a few items. One, first time I wanna take care of, I wanna introduce Trey Lavender, he's our assistant city engineer, and he's down here on the end, and he's sitting in for Stephen Windsorid this, this evening, so we appreciate his attendance here. We work a lot with Trey, he does a lot of the reviews from the engineering side, from the developers that are doing plaids and site plans, and, and so we work closely with, with Trey. And a lot of the things that come to the planning commission, Trey has had his eyes on that, and it has comments regarding drainage, and, and other different public infrastructure-related things, so we appreciate Trey being here this evening. Also, in addition to, in addition to the valuable time that you all spend here as planning commissioners, there's also continuing education, just to let the public know, that our planning commissioners and our Board of Zoning Appeals have to have four hours of mandatory training each year, and I think we, we've had several of the planning commissioners complete their training. That last training that we had was an online training, and it was recorded, and Caitlin's gonna get you something to that link of the recording, and, but we need to finish that up and get the certifications before the end of the year. And if you had any question about that, just ask Caitlin, but she'll be sending that to you. It's actually, this is some really good training to, to do on that, so appreciate your efforts on that. Also, you can see before you, we have the schedule for next year's meetings, and go ahead and put those maybe in your calendar. There's a couple of dates that are a little bit different, there is one date that, on Election Day, on November the fifth, that was a typical meeting, we're gonna end up meeting on Monday, November the fourth. So that'll be a little bit out of the ordinary, but I think before, we've met on Election Day, and it's gonna be a presidential election day, and probably, we wanna make sure we're not meeting on that day. Sorry.
Just, just one quick question. So March fifth is also the presidential primary, I had a question about that, if that should be moved as well, or, I'm not asking for it to be moved, but I, I knew that the reason you all moved the November meeting was for that reason. So just throwing that out there.
March the fifth, I was not aware of that. We'll look at it, and if, if there is a change to that, I'll, I'll let you know at the next meeting. Let me, I will look at that a little closer, primary, okay. All right, we'll do that. Also, at the next month's, this is the last meeting for this year, at next month's January Planning Commission meeting, we will be having the election of officers, so kinda be thinking, thinking about that, as well as I'll do a year-end report, and go over some of the metrics and the data of, of what has, is what has happened here in 2024. Liked your comment, John, about the chicken, chicken restaurants, we, we get that quite a bit there in the planning office, and I think you explained that, explained that very well, and I, I appreciate you explaining that. But one of the things that I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about at the January meeting, when I talk about the metrics and data of everything, there's hundreds and hundreds of certificate of occupancies, and use of occupancies, for new businesses and services that, that, that came to Hendersonville just last year. And so I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. Sometimes I think the focus can be on the obvious Costco, a chicken place, you know, something that's very visible, but there are, there are tons of very active, vital businesses that are locating all over the place. You know, we have some that leave, you know, it just doesn't work out, but those faces, those places that they're leaving, they get filled pretty quickly. So that's, I'll be sharing that in that year-end report. Also, I wanted to share with the planning commission, the, appreciate the Board of Alderman, and appreciate Alderman Martin, that approved the new fee schedule for all of our planning-related fees. For a long time, you know, our fee schedule for applications, really, in our community and adjacent communities, we just look at what other people have next to us and kinda keep up with that. It really wasn't based on really what the cost to, of the services were, but we've done a study, and we did that in the planning office here over the last year, and we did a study, and we determined how many hours we spend conservatively, you know, on all these different things that we touch, and between us, the fire department, and the public works department that Trey's part of, and, and so now our fee schedule has increased, and it's, it's no longer significantly subsidized by the community. The applicant that's, that's getting the service, they're paying a good, fair share, about a ninety-five percent recovery, which we feel is fair on average. This is going to be significant from a financial standpoint, this will increase the amount of revenue that we're generating in the planning department by about four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars each year. So we're gonna have about four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars compared to sixty thousand, sixty, seventy thousand is about what we, what we generate now. And none of these fees, I don't feel that any of these fees will stop anybody from wanting to make an application, but the, they are, some of those fees are significantly increasing, but the applicants will be paying, you know, their fair share for that. I think somebody mentioned earlier, and at the podium, about consideration of development impact fees, BOMA is considering that, we're working with a, the plane department is working with a development impact fee consultant, and so probably here shortly after the first of the year, we'll be working with BOMA, that won't go through the planning commission, but we'll be working with BOMA, and we're looking to focus on residential impact fees that would, that would, that would attach impact fees to that, so, so that'll be happening here over the first of the year, so that's one of those things, is we're looking at, you know, making sure that we're not, we're not subsidizing heavily applicants that are, that are doing development, and doing that, and then also kind of looking at development impact fees in a fair way as well, make sure that the, the cost is being, is being, is being borne by the appropriate party, instead of the greater, greater community. And that's everything that, that had, had there, and I just really wanted to express my appreciation for each of you serving, I know this isn't the most, it's not the easiest position to do, but you do it for the love of our community, and I really appreciate that. And each, each of you individually brings something very unique to this planning commission, and I really appreciate, you know, how you share different things, and how you look at different things, and, and the questions that you ask the folks that come up here. It makes the, it makes the developments better, it makes the process better, and I just appreciate all of your efforts, so, thank you.
Thank you, Director Free. Now I just wanna say, on behalf of the planning commission, I just wanna thank you and your team there in the planning office on that, just the professional staff on that, just, you make it a lot easier coming up here on that, so, all of y'all do, and so we appreciate it very much. But with that, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. We have that motion from Commissioner Longmire, and we, it sounds like we've got a second from Commissioner Martin on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none? Thank you all very much, thank you all very much, and Merry Christmas, everybody, we'll see you after the first of the year.